...Board of Directors. I want to make note for the record, Ms. Bender is not able to be here for this meeting. She is en route from the NACO Legislative Conference in Washington, DC. And believes she will be here in time for the Board of Supervisors meeting. So she is delayed, but she is on official county business. I will lead the invocation and the pledge of allegiance will be by Mr. Weekly.
And Madam Chair, thank you for putting all of us here together in service to our community. Please watch over us and guide us in making decisions in the best interest of our customers and our community. May we pray.
In the name of the Father, and in the name of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are no amendments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone has the opportunity to speak. Is there anyone that would like to come forward for public comment at this time? Being none, is there anyone online? No? Very good. We'll move on to reports of members of the board.
Yes, ma'am. Attended the budget workshop on February 27th.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Parker?
Same here. Attended the budget workshop on the 27th. Have to say, budget's coming along well. Appears much of the heavy lifting goes, credit goes to last year's Board of Directors. They did a lot of work to get the budget into great shape that it's in this year. And Jonathan's done a great job getting things straightened out as well.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along with my colleagues on February 27th, I attended the budget work session and with the Citizen Advisory Committee members as well. We appreciate you being there. On February 25th, I received an email via email, a copy of the draft environmental assessment, EA, associated with the FEMA grant for the Fairview Beach Riverbank stabilization project. NOAA, National Marine Fisheries Service, the last agency to weigh in on the project, has now submitted their comments, and there are no other agencies, federal or state, that need to review the project. This has allowed Schnabel Engineering to draft the EA for FEMA. The draft EA was sent to Chris Worley and me for any comments or editing suggestions we wanted to make. Both Mr. Worley and I did offer some suggestions, and once Schnabel has finalized it, EA will go to FEMA for final approval. Once FEMA adopts the EA, there will be a 30-day public comment period, and then hopefully the grant funds will be released, and King George County can then issue an RFP for construction of the project. One item of note, the National Marine Fisheries Service has offered the opinion that there is no need to impose a time-of-year restriction on the project to protect any spawning fish because the Potomac River is wide enough, three to four miles wide, to allow for sufficient safe areas for spawning. So in other words, once the contract is agreed to by the county, the construction can go forth without any other delays. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. And as for my report, I too, on February 27th, attended the Second Service Authority Board of Directors Budget Work Session, and I want to say thank you to all those who participated as we navigate the budget process and prioritize the many needs we have. All right. Consent agenda. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. County Attorney, do you have a report for us this evening?
Report at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Presentations and reports.
No presentation.
Action items. Mr. Weekly, would you like to present the Sprint lease?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You'll bring up the photo, please, Lawanda. You'll see up on the screen there, that is the picture from the street view of Village Lane, the Monmouth Water Tower site. The Service Authority has been approached by Sprint Spectrum LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership, to lease space to erect antennas on the existing Monmouth water tank. This property is known as parcel 9-82P, as in Paul, well lot number two, which is located at 16960 Village Lane in King George County, Virginia. The lease allows Sprint to co-locate antennas on the water tower to improve cell service and coverage for the citizens of King George County. The lease would also allow the Service Authority to generate revenue at a rate of $2,500 per month with a scheduled 2% annual rent increase. The term of the lease is for five years, and they do have re-ups. The term will automatically renew for five additional terms of five years each pending Board approval. I would further add, if you look at the, let me see if I have a pointer here. Do I have a pointer? There we go. So when you're driving into the site and you go through the gate, the wellhouse is right over here on the right. Everything's inside this compound. And in your service agreement towards the back, there's a photo of this perimeter. But when you go into the left, this fence goes in and it kind of doglegs back off to the left. They want to construct a little, let's see, there are 12 by 12 or 10 by 10, building there to house some of their equipment. They would then, we would have to, not we, they would have to cut holes in this spear at the bottom, and they would be responsible for making any proper touch-up or sealing off. Some of those towers have communication ports fabricated already. This tower does not, hence the reason they have to penetrate the spear. Just for the general public, there's no water in this portion. If you were to open up this access door, it just allows you to go inside. There's some valving, and then there's a riser pipe. That's where the water goes up to and feeds this bowl. So that's where your water is located. I just want the general public to know that there's no damage or causing leaks here. They would then run that cable up internally here, up to the outside, and I believe their plans spell out for three smaller antennas. That tower height is around 160 feet, and these antennas, at the most, they appear to maybe be about four feet in tall. They attach via handrail. It's below the FCC. Anything above 200 feet requires lighting for aviation laws. This is below that, so there would not be any need of lighting. Again, we feel that this is a revenue stream that the Service Authority needs, but more importantly, customers in that area would have cellphone coverage, improved services, and I would imagine that they're going to offer some internet services via hotspots as well. But I'm not here to sell their service, primarily to let you know they have presented us a lease. Mr. Gregory and I have reviewed that. We find it very favorable. We went back and actually negotiated the annual increase. Lastly, I want to point out that this doesn't just start tomorrow in this agreement. They do have up to 18 months to execute this before payment would start. So it's all based on, they view time, start time, as time of construction. So that's not when complete, it's when they actually start. They start, you know, getting their building permit because they will be required to get a building permit, obviously, for their building. Initially, I was going to put this in, I know we're going to talk revenues tomorrow, I was going to put this in that, but I've since scratched that because any time I hear up to 18 months, I don't want to count revenue haphazardly for the Service Authority. But we feel that it's good business, it's good for the public, it brings us a revenue source, so I am recommending approval for this action item.
Thank you, Mr. Weekly. Questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. I move that the Board of Directors of King George County Service Authority approve the lease agreement with Sprint Spectrum LP and authorize the General Manager to sign the lease agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Actually, now I do have a question.
I have a question, too. Do you want to go ahead first?
I guess my question, Mr. Weekly, is how does this compare in terms of the monthly rent to the lease agreement we have with, I'm blanking on the wireless company.
KGI.
For the Internet. KGI.
KGI.
Good question. So for those of you who may not be aware, the Board of Directors executed an agreement with KGI for them to be able to serve broadband services to customers, and they are looking to locate on our Oakland Park Water Tower, which is out in the Oakland Park subdivision, and also on our Arnold's Corner well site, which is just down behind the food line. That agreement was written as such for its rent-free for the first year, and then that following cycle, it would be monthly payments of $1,000 per site, so that would be $2,000 a month. And small portion, we would pay for the electric, but we would, in return, receive internet service at four of our locations, that being wastewater treatment plants, all except for the Dahlgren wastewater treatment plant.
And just so our newer members understand, one of the reasons why the board did that was, A, because KGI is a brand-new company, and they really didn't have any customers, they're not exactly Sprint. And secondly, the county had a great need of getting broadband services throughout the county, so we felt that this was something the Service Authority could do for the county as a whole, not just our own customers. So there are some reasons why that's, we're going to make less money on that lease, those leases or those two sites, and we will on the Sprint one.
And I would also add, they are a King George County business as well, so I think there was consideration made for that. I have a question for Mr. Gregory. I seem to remember, although I was not on the board, I was in the audience at the time, when we approved, when that board, I'm sorry, approved KGI's agreement, we had to have a public hearing because it was a public asset. Do we need to do that for this as well?
No, that actually wasn't required.
Okay.
The county has to provide public hearings for that purpose, but not the Service Authority. That's a separate.
So that'll be a separate county issue?
Right. So the, the, certain real property assets are owned and controlled by the county that are Service Authority assets, and some are owned and controlled by the Service Authority. It's kind of a mixed bag, and that's just by virtue of the way that the Service Authority developed over the years and acquired assets. Some were acquired by the county, some were acquired by the Service Authority. So this asset is a Service Authority asset, and so that's why the public hearing is on this.
Thank you. I'm wearing two hats and just wanted to make sure we covered that base if we had to.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So is there any further discussion? So we have a motion that has been properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. And I believe we are on General Manager's report. Mr. Weekly?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for approving that lease agreement. Did we, okay. Just a couple of slides for the night. Want to make you aware, Tonka Water Systems did come out on site. They did evaluate the following wellhouses listed above, and we anticipate receiving an evaluation report soon. Not only will it let us know the functionality and various items they may report, but definitely will be a planning tool. So that should be in queue, hopefully to receive that this week. We did receive a letter from DEQ recently requesting abandonment documentation for the following wells. What's going, bear with me here, is that, should be the second slide? Did I lose connectivity? I can report the narrative, and it'll pop up on the screen here momentarily.
There you go.
Go back, let me, here we go. Thank you very much. So the wells outlined, Arnold's Corner's well, one and three, and Presidential Lakes' wells, one and two. Now, of course, Presidential Lakes was another system we acquired, and those wells were offline. Reached out to DEQ today to ask, are they mandating these wells to be abandoned because of a specific reason, or is it because these wells have been offline? These wells have been offline for some time. I do, I apologize, I do not have an answer for you right now as of why, but part of our planning for this upcoming year, we were looking at Presidential Lake wells, one and two, because if they are serviceable, it would add a good amount of capacity to our courthouse system, which we very desperately need. I mean, one of the items you've heard us talk about recently for a development that's being considered later this month, we've talked a lot about wastewater. We've been silent on water because we can serve that existing location. As larger developments come through, we're either going to have comments of, you know, we're only going to be able to support a certain amount of that development, or certainly if we can increase our capacity, we want to do that. So we're waiting for comment back from Ms. Tisdale. We have to have a response. Depending on their response, our response is due back March 21st. So I will report back on that item as soon as we have further information.
Madam Chair, can I just follow up and make sure I understand?
Yes, you may.
So, Mr. Weekly, we're waiting to hear from DEQ whether they're telling us we have to abandon these wells. Is that what you said?
Yes, sir. We want them to clarify, is it abandonment because we've had these wells offline for a period of time, or is it abandonment because they have some impact, such as gravel or something of that nature?
And have, did you, you said you had a conversation with them, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Did you let them know that we may need them for future development and expansion?
No, sir.
So we'll wait and see what their letter says?
We'll see what their letter says, but we'll definitely come back with that comment because, again, you know, I know there's talk, quote unquote, of maybe some other sizable development being applied for. That does not mean it'll be granted, or not granted for that matter, but if those things come on the horizon for this courthouse area, then looking ahead, planning for the future, we would love to put those two additional Presidential Lake wells in service.
If I remember correctly, before you even got here, we found out that there were some wells on the Fairview Beach system that were, is offline the right word for that?
There, yes, sir. Potomac Landing, of the three wells that are out there, Fairview Beach Two, which is on the main drag coming into Fairview, if you're heading towards Thames, and Fairview Three, which I believe is off 11th Street down that way, those are in service. Potomac Landing was one that was taken out of service. So, yes, sir, similar rationale.
My understanding is we were trying to get that one back in service?
That one needs to be correct, but it needs to be evaluated, that particular well, Potomac Landing, we're not sure if it's being impacted where it's actually pumping sand versus, you know, the aquifer itself.
As opposed to water, right?
Correct. As opposed to water, correct.
But if I remember correctly, we want to have what the engineers call redundancy, in other words, backups. So Arnold's Corner, one and three are currently abandoned or offline, I guess is the better word. How many other wells do we have on that system?
On the courthouse system, we have, how many would you say, four? Yeah, thank you, Patty. So four, four on that system. So they're adequate, they're supplying. Matter of fact, if you looked at, and I don't have the numbers for me, but I do know if you look at what our average daily demand is, and we report that monthly, versus the groundwater withdrawal permit, we're meeting that, we still have capacity with the wells that are in production. So those wells would have a positive impact if we are allowed to bring those back online.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at, is there an Arnold's Corner well, number two? I mean, there's a number one and a number two.
Yeah, well, let me clarify this, because the numbering can be misleading, having gone through some of this exercise. So when you're going to develop exploratory wells for potential production wells, meaning you want to put those in service, they come out and there's a mapping done of that, of where they think, you know, you may have a good aquifer, and the Health Department and the Office of Drinking Water, which are separate, one's the state agency, one's the local Health Department, and they will identify those on a map. So it could be well 12, well 1, well 20. They may not be in sequence as such. It just so happens that those are referred to as wells 1 and 3.
But all four of them are on the courthouse water system, right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. If the board like, I can provide a follow-up email of the wells on that system. I can shoot you a follow-up email tomorrow.
If you could, I think that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. On the wastewater side, just want to report, there were two items remaining on the consent order to close out, one being revise O and M submittals, and the other being the pump station. The O and Ms. were submitted on February 29th, so we're just waiting on follow-up. We hope they approve them. I went through the detailed work. Wally and Wilson did a lot of updating. We actually have a spare parts inventory, which I know sounds crazy, but one would expect it, but I'm happy we have that now. I feel confident that we have an up-to-date, accurate spare parts list. Our main thing is now going through that list and that we have all those parts, but at least we have that identifier in our O and M manuals that we're lacking before. So again, we're hoping for a favorable response. And then that last item, we did address DEQ's follow-up questions they had initially for our pump station PR, that's the five-year plan. You heard me speak a little bit about it at our budget meeting last night, the priority one, two, and three items. We feel we've satisfied those comments, but I have requested an actual approval letter. Again, as I mentioned last time, I believe it was your question, sir, that we received, we just received an email that said we like your approach. We want something official. We feel we addressed those comments, but again, we're at the, waiting for DEQ to respond to that. And that's all I have at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Weekly. Questions from the Board of Directors?
Naturally, I have one. Actually, this one's for Mr. Gregory, though. Mr. Gregory, do you know what the mechanics will be for the consent order with DEQ? Once we get the O and M manuals approved, and the only thing left outstanding is the pump stations, do you know what, if anything, will have to be done with that consent order to show that we've resolved everything but that, or will it just stay in effect, the existing order? Do you happen to know?
They, I believe DEQ would probably take the position that the consent order is outstanding until all of those items in their entirety are closed out. If they want to sort of give you a preliminary release, or whatever you might call that, they'd have to amend the consent order to do that, and then enter into a new consent order for that discrete item. So that can get a little messy, or a little, you know, it's a process you'd have to go through, and you'd have to go, in order to amend the consent order, of course, you'd have to go back before the State Water Control Board. So that's, that's the process that you would have to follow if you wanted to go down that path. But we can certainly touch base with DEQ about that if you want us to.
If I may, can I add to that, sir? So Kristin Sadler, who's the enforcement, her title's Enforcement Manager, but she's leading the enforcement, handling all the coordination, the consent order. What they're doing, because we've kept in touch all along where we're at in the process, even items that may be in the wings that are coming to them, such as the O and Ms. that were recently submitted. So she has stated they are going to work towards a draft amendment to the consent order, because she didn't want to wait around until we have the O and M submitted, and then we have that pump stations as the one remaining item. She wanted to work in parallel. That process has to go back through, as Mr. Gregory informed through the State Water Control Board. It also will have to go through an advertisement. That's one of the reasons why she wanted to have the draft ready, not approved, but assuming we've satisfied the O and Ms., then they would clean up the consent order, they would close out all those other items officially, and then it would be, the consent order will remain in effect, but it would be amended to just include that last item. That's per Ms. Sadler's response.
If I remember correctly, we did have a public hearing on that in Richmond, correct?
Yes, sir. There was a public hearing before the State Water Control Board in Richmond, and I believe that process would be followed for any amendment there, too.
That's what it sounds like. Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Bennett? Did you have another question?
No.
Oh, okay. You just looked like you were ready to.
Ready to make a motion to adjourn, but that's.
Just one more thing. Thank you, Mr. Weekly, for your report, and thank you to staff for coming out tonight. As always, we appreciate it. Now, if there's no further business, Mr. Bennett?
I move we adjourn till tomorrow night, March 4th, at 6:00 PM, for our budget work session at Company One Headquarters.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are adjourned. Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned.
I move to add a closed session to tonight's agenda.
Second.
Do we have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, chair votes aye, motion carries. Now we have public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public...
Okay. Good evening, thank you for the time. My name is Mike Maldonado. I'm a resident of King George out of the Dahlgren District. And I'm here tonight for two reasons. Number one, me and my daughter Maxie would like to thank the county recreation parks for the annual princess dad ball that they do every year. This was our third year in attendance and they do a fantastic job for the community in terms of the organization and bringing dads and daughters together. And the second reason I'm here is because my daughter, Maxie, out of Potomac Elementary School, asked me last week, who is the major of King George? And I figured that will be, this is the perfect place to ask that question. So if anybody would like to take lead on that, I say we have five mayors. So if anybody could please very briefly explain how the board supervisors work and that would be highly appreciated.
I'll take that one on since I'm the chairman. Hello, so there are five of us. Four of us represent districts, which is, well, voting district, and there is one at-large supervisor, which means she represents everybody in the community. And all of us work as one, there's no one head, but once a year, there is a chair, once a year. Every year we rotate a chairman, which is me this year, and each district is represented, and we make decisions to run the county. And I would love to come to Potomac Elementary sometime to talk to classes because my daughter goes to Potomac. What grade are you in, young lady?
My grade is kindergarten.
Kindergarten. Who do you have?
Ms. Brinkman.
Cool, I don't know her. My daughter had Ms. Shaw and she loved Ms. Shaw. Well, thank you for talking, and don't ever be afraid to talk. You have a very pretty smile.
Thank you so much for your time. Plan is to go see Ms. Margaret in Richmond and probably Congressman Whitman at spring break, too.
All right.
Taking advantage of the initiative, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come up and give a, gotopped a little girl? All right, is there anybody online? Any correspondents? All right, I will close public comment and we will move to the reports from members of the board. Mr. Bush.
So good evening. Good evening and thank you to everybody for coming out. Happy National Anthem Day. Star Spangled Banner was codified on this day in 1931, so I thought that was pretty unique to point out. On the 19th of February, I along with Ms. Bender and Dr. Young attended the organizational meeting of the Infrastructure Advisory Committee. Thank you to all those who have agreed to volunteer their time and service to our county. From the Charter, the purpose, the Infrastructure Advisory Committee is established by the authority of the board and serves at the pleasure of the board. The committee's duties and responsibilities shall include advising the board on specific strategies and matters related to addressing deteriorating infrastructure in the county. Basically, the committee will take an inventory of county assets, properties, which have been left vacant, deteriorating, et cetera, and make a projection of viability and utility within the next five years. By years in, their ultimate recommendation will be to improve rehab property or a future use or liquidate through private sale, et cetera. The thought behind this is to either have the asset serve the citizens through appropriate uses or have the property placed back on the tax rolls, bring in much-needed revenue through private sale. I look forward to their eventual report and presentation of recommendations. On the 20th of February, I attended the Budget Work Session at Fire Rescue Company One. As a reminder, public comment is afforded at the beginning of all our work sessions as well as our meetings, should you wish to address the board. Should your schedule permit, I encourage you to engage in the process of how your tax dollars are being spent. On the 24th of February, I always enjoy stopping in from time to time at the monthly Chamber of Commerce meetings to engage with our business community, to hear of their successes, challenges, and thoughts on future of King George County and our business community. I appreciate Mr. Don Smith, Chamber President, affording me the opportunity to address the chamber and to take questions from the audience. Thank you, Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka.
Thank you. Mr. Maldonado, thank you very much for coming out this evening and sharing with us your experience at the princess ball with your daughter Maxie. I too, although I am the at-large supervisor, I too live in the Dahlgren District. So I want to thank you for what you shared with us and Potomac Elementary School. I have a son now in ninth grade, and guess who his kindergarten teacher was? Mrs. Brinkman. Tell her Mrs. Cupka says hello. All right then, let me move on to my formal report. Thank you. On February 20th, I attended the county budget work session. Thank you to all of our department directors who attended and provided a line-by-line detail of their budget requests. Thank you to Dr. Young and Director of Finance, Wilma Ward, for your guidance through the budget process. On February 24th, I attended with Ms. Bender the GWRC and FAMPO meetings. As a reminder, we currently have a vacancy on the FAMPO C-TAC, that's Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee. So please contact your supervisor if you'd like to participate. On February 27th, I attended along with Dr. Young and Sheriff Giles the Rappahannock Regional Jail Board of Directors meeting. Retired Sheriff Steve Dempsey was presented a plaque and honored for his contributions to that board. Thank you to our own county administrator, Dr. Young, for serving on the finance committee and your work in crafting the budget which we adopted that afternoon. On February 29th, I attended an evening in the stacks and was honored to present the library with a King George County commemorative coin and a King George County 300th Anniversary Commemorative Coin and speak about what Smoot Library means to me. It was a great event jointly hosted by Smoot Library's Board of Trustees, the Friends of Smoot Library, library staff, our Economic Development and Tourism staff, thank you, Mr. Minor, and our 300th Anniversary Celebration Planner. On March 4th, I attended the memorial service for Mr. Richard Snow, founder of Exit Realty Expertise. Together with his wife Julia, the Snows gave back to our community in so many ways and were advocates for outdoor activities and great supporters of our King George County schools. He will be sorely missed. At this time, I would like to make appointments to two vacancies, if I may, Madam Chair. I wish to appoint Mr. Bob Baird to the Citizens Infrastructure Advisory Committee.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
And I wish to appoint Ms. Julie Boucher to the Social Services Board.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you guys for serving.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to read aloud, if it pleases the board, for adoption by this board, a resolution declaring March 16, 2020, President James Madison's 269th birthday. Once adopted, this resolution will be read aloud at our 300th Anniversary Event on March 14th at Bell Grove Plantation. Thank you. King George County Resolution in observance of James Madison's birthday. Whereas James Madison Jr. was born on March 16, 1751, at Port Conway in King George County, Virginia, to James Madison Sr. and Eleanor Conway at the Conway Home on the Rappahannock River. And whereas, he participated in drafting Virginia's Statute of Religious Freedom, the Virginia Constitution in 1776, and was a leader in the Virginia General Assembly. And whereas, the Constitution of the United States, adopted in 1787, was... the Constitution of the United States, adopted in 1787, was largely designed under his guidance on the Virginia Plan, and for this, he is widely regarded as the father of the Constitution. And whereas he co-authored the Federalist Papers with Alexander Hamilton and John Jay, and whereas as a member of United States Congress, he helped frame the Bill of Rights in 1789, and whereas he served as Secretary of State in President Thomas Jefferson's Cabinet, and whereas he was twice elected to serve as President of the United States. Now, therefore, the Board of Supervisors of King George County, Virginia, does hereby recognize March 16, 2020, as the 269th Birthday of King George County's native son, President James Madison, adopted this day.
Thank you. Mr. Granger?
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute, yes we do, don't we? Yep, sorry about that.
I move to adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, chair votes aye, motion carries.
I just have two more things to finish my report, sorry. Had a lot of stuff to do, people to appoint, gotta recognize our host of our event later this month. Alright, Community Cleanup Day will occur on Saturday, March 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Cleanups will be conducted at the following parks and/or facilities. Sedell Brooks Park, Sealston Sports Complex, King George Citizen Center, Wilmont Landing, and Barnesfield Park. I will be splitting my time that day between Wilmont Landing and Barnesfield Park. We are working on securing a donation from a local restaurant to support lunch back at the Citizen Center for all those who volunteer that morning. Please visit my Facebook page or King George Parks and Recreation's Facebook page for the sign-up genius link to sign up to volunteer. And I wonder, is there any way we can possibly get that link on the county website somehow? Is that something we could have IT?
No problem, ma'am.
Thank you. And a side note, I was pleased to see my copy of the County Credit Card Use Agreement for my signature in my mailbox this afternoon. Thank you again to Dr. Young and Ms. Ward for implementing those changes to tighten our credit card policies. Finally, thank you again to all of you in our community for the opportunity to serve you. Please don't hesitate to contact me via email or visit me during office hours. My next office hours will occur on Saturday, March 14, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at Smoot Library. I also plan to attend the home show at King George High School on Sunday, March 8, and the James Madison Birthday Celebration on Saturday, March 14th, so feel free to stop me and chat with me about your cares and concerns for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Granger?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, just thank you for coming out and bringing your daughter. It's always great to see families being involved and helping their kids understand the representation and how it all works. So thank you for being involved, and I'm glad to hear that the Parks and Recreation's Princess Ball was a hit. So thanks for sharing that as well. Thursday, February 20th, I attended the third budget work session. Felt like we had a really good discussion about the line-by-lines and got through a lot of departments fairly quickly considering the number of departments I had to look through, but yeah, I think we did a good job of actually stepping through each item. And so thank you to my colleagues and the advisory committee for their dedication on that. Wednesday, the 26th, I attended the commeril meeting. There was a brief about the Nice Bridge build, the building of the Nice Bridge. They had a nice five-minute video, which was condensed down, they have a 21-minute video online that anyone can go to and check out. It's at www.nicenicebridge.com. It's for anyone to see, and it kind of gives you a whole overlay of what the process is going to be and how they're going to be doing it. They're going to be starting to do some exploratory drilling in the next couple of weeks, so there could be divers out there. It's not that they're actually starting the construction necessarily, it's really just exploratory drilling. So if you see people out there, it's probably what has to deal with. Solid Curtain Citadel Shield completed on the 17th of February, command scored 88, which apparently was a very solid score. They passed, so it's always good to hear that the base is successful in those regards. And we had a brief about the Malus Babe and just the value it provides to the region. Saturday, February 29th, I also attended the evening in the stacks. I appreciate Ms. Cupka coming to present, and it was a really nice evening, and thank you to all the staff. I think I saw representation from every department, so it was really nice to see the whole staff come out and support it. It was a big deal, a lot of people from the community, 300th Anniversary, 50th Anniversary for the library. Nice event and well-attended, so thank you all for helping to make that a success. The last thing I have is, I met Mr. Stroud at the meet, I ran into him at the commeril meeting, and so we were discussing the Infrastructure Advisory Committee, and so I'm glad that Mr. Bush kind of ran through the official responsibilities of the committee because he had shown some interest, and I'm assuming he's still amenable to serving because I was intending to appoint him. Awesome. Hopefully I didn't misrepresent anything, hopefully didn't hear anything new from Mr. Bush. But in that case, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Ken Stroud to the Infrastructure Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries.
Sir, thank you for your service, appreciate it. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have a prepared Board report because I have been at the 2020 NACO Legislative Conference in DC, and I literally just got back from there, but I will want to give the highlights. I'll try to prepare stuff to give a little bit more, because there's a lot of information to absorb on every day, but one of the most important things I want to say is, I told people there how we're starting a new thing where we're going to have each of the chairmans, each year whoever's the chairman gets to go to this conference, and I think it's really important that we have each one of our members get a chance to go to it because you learn so much, especially what our legislators in the federal government have prepared for us and what is on the radar. It's really important because Dr. Young was also there, and we learned some things that we didn't know were on the radar, and it's really important for localities, and we made a lot of connections with people so that we can ask more questions and get detailed answers, because they can't always give you the answers there. And no matter what your political choice of the aisle is, it was incredible to be able to see the President of the United States speak. I think that's a big honor, to actually be able to see your president speak in a close setting, and that was an amazing experience, and I want to give the county and my colleagues a thank you to letting me have that opportunity to see that. I think it's a great honor to see whoever your president is, because he is the leader of your country. And, I want to thank everyone for the evening in the stacks. I was obviously not able to go, but I know, I've heard that it was a great event, and being on the Smoot Library Board of Trustees, I thank everyone who came and supported the Smoot Library. It's an amazing thing in our community, and some people in DC knew who Mr. Smoot was, especially since his, I guess it would be called gravel pit or mining operation helped build the Pentagon and the Harry Nice Bridge and several embassies in DC, so it was a cool event. And one other thing, I'm going to talk to Ms. Harris and Ms. Eli at Potomac Elementary and see if they would invite some of the supervisors over to talk, because that was one thing we discussed about at the legislative conference, is that I was looking in the rooms at all the committee meetings, and there were, most of the people were 40 years and older, and there wasn't a lot of young people. Most of the young people were staff members. They were there with their job. And we talked a lot about, why is that? And I think sometimes the younger generation looks up to celebrities and sports figures too much, and how do we get them to look up maybe to people in their own community and see them as mentors? So I think it's more important that we go into the schools and talk to kids and tell them that there's other things than being a celebrity or a sports figure, and so that's one thing I would like to do. I took, and a lot of other people agreed that they were looking around the room and said, where's all the young people? And it would be really great to have those young people there at the conference representing their communities. And that is the end of my Board report, thank you. Alright, next up, consent agenda.
Move to accept as presented. Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, chair vote aye, motion carries. Alright, constitutional officers? Port of the county attorney?
No report this time, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Agency reports and public hearings, no. Presentation and reports? Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, RIFA, presentation by Mr. Curry Roberts, Fredericksburg Regional Alliance. You're up.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Let me quickly say, though, that 40-year-olds in a crowd look pretty young to me these days, so don't be bashing 40-year-olds, it's getting younger all the time.
Thank you, Curry.
Hey, hey, I'm right there with you, it's alright.
Matter of fact, 50's looking pretty good right now. I've done this presentation a couple of times, and the, I will only use this if you ask a question where I need a visual aid, because I've found sometimes it's easier to draw something up than to try to explain it. And this is going to be a little different because I'm going to start with what a RIFA does not do, and just get that out of the way before we get into the rest of it. A RIFA, Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, does not require a locality to invest or participate in a project. It does not tax or regulate land or projects. It does not create local liability or exposure unless you're a participant in a project, and it does not replace the work of a local EDA. It would typically augment that work. So with that as background, let me sort of share a little bit of what a RIFA does. A RIFA, Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, is created by two or more localities, at least two of which need to be counties or cities to collaborate on regional development of industrial properties. The localities share the costs and the tax revenue using the RIFA as an administrator of that agreement that is entered into between two or more jurisdictions. This was created by the General Assembly in 1997. It originally had three or more localities working through the Virginia Economic Developers Association. A couple of years ago, we got that reduced to two, because there have been two jurisdictions in this region actually discussing this for about two and a half years on a specific property. Each locality that would want to participate in the RIFA would do so by concurrent ordinance. I'm not asking today for you to join a RIFA. I will get to what we have been discussing with your staff and with the economic development staffs around the region. Each jurisdiction, if there are two or more jurisdictions in a RIFA, each jurisdiction gets two members, and they typically serve four-year terms. The only requirement on those members is they have to be citizens of the Commonwealth. And what I'm starting to see in a lot of other regions, they're typically putting people on there that would be similar to what you would appoint to an EDA. So you would look for people with some business expertise, finance expertise, development expertise to place on a RIFA. Preliminary documentation, when you're crafting up the ordinance for a RIFA and its establishment and its bylaws, you establish the rights and the obligations of the members. It may describe general agreements on sharing costs, and all that needs to be is a general statement, and I'll come to why that only needs to be a general statement in a minute. It may describe, if desired by the participants, how revenues would be shared, and again, that can be a very general statement. Cost-sharing and revenue-sharing arrangements need not be the same across all the facilities or properties managed by the RIFA. As particular projects are developed and financed, there will be other documentations unique to that transaction. The RIFA is the administrator, and I'll, I'm going to give you an example in Roanoke, which is the best example for our region. The RIFA is a tool. It's a tool you may never use, but you're also not obligated to spend any money. It cannot obligate you to anything unless you yourself choose to be a participant in a transaction. This is a map of the other Regional Industrial Facilities Authorities across Virginia, there are actually 10. I know of one other that's in discussions now that would make it 11. 47 total localities are participating in Regional and Industrial Facilities Authorities. The newest one is the shaded purple in the eastern part of the state. That basically runs from York County to Chesapeake. There are 11 participants in that RIFA. They originally came together, they are supporting an unmanned vehicle training and testing facility in York County. Those jurisdictions wanted to participate in the development of that site. Chesapeake recently participated or joined, and you can leave these open to add other members as you go, because they're in a completely different PDC from the jurisdictions north of the James River. Chesapeake actually has a 5,000-acre mega-site, and they are trying to see if they can induce some of their neighboring jurisdictions to participate in development of that site. The one I want to talk the most about as a good example of where we are as a region is the Western Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority. That's in Roanoke, it's actually administered by our sister organization down there, the Roanoke Valley Partnership actually helped to pull that together. It was created in 2013 with no sites under consideration. Those are the jurisdictions, six jurisdictions roughly in the Roanoke Valley came together to do this, and they went through an exhaustive process of looking at 100 sites across all their jurisdictions, looking to stand up one as a technology park. They then created the Woodhaven Technology Park, they have acquired 100 acres in Roanoke County. If you're familiar with the geography out there, it's roughly at the intersection of 581 and 81. Three localities out of the six have decided that they want to participate in that project. They entered into a participation agreement. The participation agreement spells out what they are investing to buy the land, to help develop the land. It then also spells out how the tax revenue will be split among those participants. So you only have three of the six participating, they're the only ones obligated to that project. The RIFA is being administered by our counterparts, and the Planning District Commission down there is the fiscal agent. What they hope to do, what they see as an opportunity there, is to attract high-tech projects, some of them being spun off by the Teaching and Research Hospital in Roanoke that's built around Corillian Healthcare, or, and the Virginia Tech Research Park is actually at the moment full, and so they're looking to capture projects that might have traditionally gone there or are there and need to expand and can. Virginia Tech is only 35 miles from this facility. What this makes you eligible for, and this site has been eligible, they got a million-dollar grant from Go Virginia for site development funds, they were eligible for that because it's inter-jurisdictional. It's also eligible and would score very high being inter-jurisdictional to seek funds from the Business Ready Sites Program, VEDP. One other piece about this, a few years ago, the Commonwealth set up an annual $20 million fund called the Virginia Collaboratives Jobs Act for qualifying projects, and that can be a sliding and negotiated scale of jobs and capital investment. The Commonwealth will rebate up to 45% of the personal income taxes paid by those who are employed in a company that locates in an operation in inter-jurisdictional site like this for up to six years. So it's an additional incentive to collaborate on the site that would come back to the local governments to use either in further development of the site or to incent the prospective company to locate there. Next steps, what we are pursuing is a Go Virginia grant. It will cost between $25,000 and $30,000 to develop the documentation to establish a RIFA. We have shared examples, both of the RIFA but also the partnership agreement, Eric, that exists in Roanoke. I'd be happy to send that, both of those to you if you'd like to see them. If all five of our jurisdictions were to participate, as you know, it's a 50/50 match for funds from Go Virginia, so we'd be looking for $2,500 to $3,000 from each locality to proceed in order to make a grant application. What we'd like to do in order to save money, I know Roanoke spent about $55,000 actually sitting theirs up. What we want to do is retain the same law firm that recently did Ampton Roads in order to make it as cost-efficient as possible. Details of particular cost-sharing and revenue-sharing do not need to be worked out in order to establish the RIFA. It again is simply a tool that if our jurisdictions want to come to an arrangement around a property, you use the RIFA to administer whatever partnership agreement or participation agreement that you come up with. And again, different projects, different participants can have different costs and different revenue-sharing arrangements. It is good to keep the local EDAs involved as you proceed, however, all decisions are ultimately up to the governing body of each jurisdiction. So what would be the next step if you helped to fund us to get the Go Virginia grant? We'd go through and- If you helped to fund us to get the Go Virginia grant, we'd go through and set up with the attorney's legal documentation, including an ordinance. That would come back to you for you to make a decision as to whether you want to adopt an ordinance and join the RIFA. Then if a project should come up, that's a separate participation agreement, that would still have to come back to you for approval. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you for coming out tonight, Barry. So just so I have a general understanding with the RIFA, so King George obviously has limited funds. So for example, if, let's say Fredericksburg, Pennsylvania, was looking to bring in a facility that's physically located in Fredericksburg, Pennsylvania. We would be, if we agreed, hey, this is a good project for the region, would we be under an obligation at that point to participate with them? Or if we said, yeah, that's a great project, it could probably help our citizens, but we have limited funding, we can't contribute towards the infrastructure build-out, and we don't participate in it, would that hurt, let's say, our future business recruiting efforts that the FRA is doing?
No.
It wouldn't?
No.
Okay.
No. That's why I used the Roanoke example. My counterparts are still marketing in the other jurisdictions who did not participate in that. It does not change your relationship with us, does not change what you're trying to do within your own jurisdiction.
So this is a total pick and choose. If this is a project that would benefit the county of King George, we could opt to participate? If there's no return on investment, we could say, sorry, we're not interested?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then can I add one thing to that?
Yes, sir.
I might suggest you could also flip around and look at it the other way.
Okay.
And I have no idea, before I say this, what I would be, and I would like to tell Kathy to put her pen down, but I don't have any control over that, but assume for a moment the city of Fredericksburg, which has limited industrial properties, but who do understand that a city surrounded by vibrant counties makes that city a lot more attractive and vibrant from a revenue standpoint. You may have a prospect who's looking at a large site near industrial center, and you don't have the infrastructure resources to meet the requirements or the speed of that project. You could then look at, well, we can do this, but we're happy to share the revenue on such and such a percentage if other jurisdictions would want to invest, and you could offer that to the other jurisdictions, the city or the others, and it becomes, it's a land deal, and it's a function of the return on investment at that point. So how much are you looking for, but how much of the tax revenue are you willing to share based on the project? That is its own separate agreement. Nobody is forced to do it. It frankly is a business decision as to whether you want to proceed.
So that leads into my second question. So obviously, we have the industrial park. We're recruiting very heavily to bring in businesses, industry, to that area. If we were in a relationship with a RIFA, and Mr. Minor was very successful in bringing somebody that wanted to locate in our industrial park, that's totally separate, correct? That's a county initiative, not a RIFA initiative.
That is correct. You do not give up any control of your own industrial properties unless you choose to do so by seeking partners.
Okay.
It doesn't, the RIFA doesn't do anything except help foster these developments and then manage whatever agreements are created. Doesn't force any agreements. It doesn't require any agreements, and it doesn't change how the county is marketed by us or by you all, and you're still in control of that.
So last question, hypothetical again. Let's say that we do locate a business in our industrial park, and it was done through a RIFA partnership, okay? Is there a term of how long those tax revenues are divvied up between everybody that participated? And if so, at what point would the revenue strictly become the property of King George County? And that's my last question, I promise.
No, it's okay, keep asking. I'm enjoying the discussion because, again, not being an expert, it's to exactly everyone. I know in the Roanoke case, there is no limit that I can see in their partnership agreement, but they also jointly acquired the property. So those jurisdictions all own that property. If you partnered with a private landowner, again, it becomes a function of payback. If someone invests a million dollars and locality's looking for, you know, 20 or 30% return over some period of time, and you can negotiate, it's just subject to whatever you can negotiate with your neighboring jurisdictions. You're welcome.
Can I add something quick?
I don't know. I thought it was doing okay, Nick.
No, I think I just want to, I just want to give an example of how I see this benefiting the county. So let's say that there is a project that needs to be specifically located somewhere, and King George has that geography that can work to that, but we don't have the funds to develop that property. In this case, we would look to the RIFA to help us develop that and then negotiate how that would work out. And the reason why I give that example is because, you know, we're surrounded around a lot of water. We have rivers, we have access to either a barge or something like that. So if a project needed to be located off of that water, there's not a lot of counties in the region that can offer that access. But we do have that access. So this is where that RIFA would come in to help us develop that site to make that much more attractive for a business opportunity for the county. So that's why I would say this is probably, you know, one of those cases where we'd look to try to use something, try to use the RIFA to develop that property. And I'm not aware of any projects that was, that's looking for something like that, or I don't know of any landowners that would be willing to sell to us. I just know that, you know, in this particular case, given our geography and given where we are, this is where a RIFA could be definitely beneficial. Also consider it for something like trying to get a gas line to the industrial park, trying to get a gas line to the Taylor property. This is also one of those things. So just consider those things as well as you look this over.
So Nick, stay up there. So you would basically consider this a tool in your toolbox to make you successful for King George Economic Development, correct?
I would say yes, to make the county successful in winning a project, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I do have just one question. When do you, if we did participate, when is the timetable that you need by?
For the Go Virginia? We have to make application by March 27th, so we need to know before then.
Okay, thank you.
Sometime in the next week.
Yeah. What do you guys?
So the upfront cost would be somewhere in the range of $2,500 to $3,000, and that would be the total cost.
Per jurdice.
And that would be the total cost, and that's just for doing the setup of the organization to create the RIFA.
It's to retain an attorney to draft documents, to come back and present, and an opportunity for your county attorney to review those. But in that would be the ordinance to establish the RIFA.
What were you going to say? Tracking, thank you.
Board, I think that this is a great opportunity, and I think that it's low risk. That's what I really want to stress. $2,500, we have it in the contingency and can afford it. I'd highly recommend that we pursue it and see where it leads us. I mean, it's a low-risk investment and something that can bring us a great return on investment.
Yeah, I agree. Go ahead.
What are the other partners just so far? Is there anybody partnering so far?
I have three other meetings this week.
Gotcha.
We would be the first?
We would be the first. It's always good to be first.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to participate in this program and allocate an amount of not to exceed $3,000 from contingency fund.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have a question, wait, I have a question, ma'am, because I wasn't aware of that. So if there's, right now, we'll be the first, but we'll still be on the hook for the $2,500 if, say, only one additional, say, if only one additional jurisdiction joins, and there's a cost of $30,000, does that mean that our costs increase, or what happens if only two jurisdictions join and there's $30,000?
Well, I think we'd have to have a discussion about that, but it's highly unlikely you'll be the only one.
That's why I said not to exceed $3,000.
He said, and I understand not to exceed $3,000. I do understand what that means.
I was very clear.
My apologies, board, but just want to make sure that's clear.
So any discussion? We had our discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nay? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Curry. You're very welcome.
All right, Department of Parks and Recreation update to Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee bylaws.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The bylaws of Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee specify a meeting date, which is the major changes that's in this bylaws. In addition, includes an appointee of a student to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council by the Board of Supervisors, which I assume will be recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director. However, he's pursuing these bylaws specifically to change the meeting date of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Number one, to accommodate one member of the committee who can't meet on the currently established Wednesday of the month. And number two, if he's able to shift those dates, he can actually accommodate the Infrastructure Advisory Committee meeting on the third Wednesday and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting on the second Wednesday, and that way he can attend both of those two committees.
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have one minor change since we are amending them tonight. If we can include this, on page three, section five, "The Committee Shall Advise the Director in Preparing and Recommending to the Country Administrator." Can we please change country to county because he is our county administrator? That is all.
Right, ma'am, we can do that.
I move to make the correction that Ms. Kupka had recommended to the bylaws.
Second? Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nay? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up, discussion items, courthouse, sorry, county attorney, execution of county attorney contract.
Yes, ma'am. I believe per your amendment to the agenda to add the closed session regarding that matter, you're going to defer action until after the closed session?
And we move to discussion item, courthouse construction options. Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The County Courthouse RFP Committee has completed reviewing bids for architectural firms who have submitted proposals to execute the design of the new courthouse. After designing a facility, local governments, to include King George County, have traditionally used the conventional design-bid-build process to construct large capital projects. However, the recent middle school expansion project has demonstrated a need for the administration to consider different approaches to delivering the project to the community. After researching different construction methods, the staff has come to the belief that the construction manager-at-risk, or CMAR, approach is a more advantageous construction approach to building the courthouse than conventional methods. If I could please refer you to the screen? The design-bid-build process is also known as the traditional lowest bidder process. The construction manager-at-risk, or CMAR, alternative differs because it allows you to select the architect and then what you call a contract manager. The contract manager is brought in when the design of the project is at 60% completion. He is then allowed to provide input into the plans from an underground construction point of view. This helps to cut down on errors and allows for a second set of eyes to be placed on the plans. More importantly, the construction manager can then assign cost to each component of the plans and provide the county a guaranteed maximum price. Virtually any changes to the plans, an example, change orders, then become the responsibility of the construction manager and not the county. Hence, that's why this process is called the construction manager-at-risk. Again, as annotated on the box on the right-hand side, this pointer never works for me, but if you'll see, if you notice in that box on the right-hand side, in between the box labels, "Construction Manager/Contractor/Architect," you see that the biggest difference between both boxes is that dotted line, and that dotted line is very important. What it alludes to is that in the CMAR process, it allows for there to be a collaborative relationship between the architect and the construction manager. What does that mean? That means that unlike the traditional bid process, I mean, the traditional design-bid process, there's no longer surprises during the project, there's no more change orders, and there's no more people coming to the podium and pointing fingers saying, oh, well, it's the architect's fault. No, it's the construction manager's fault. Well, in this, in this process, both the construction manager and architect actually speaking, you know, at the 60% completion, and then throughout the completion of the project, they're basically on the same team and basically have what you call the unity of command. So now we have one team that's held responsible for the project and for any surprises that arise during the project that would hold their feet to the fire and make sure that the project's completed on time. CMAR has a few advantages over design-bid-build. Number one, CMAR is faster as the procurement process is shortened as a result of the construction manager being identified nearly simultaneously with the conclusion of the design process. To quantify the statement, on average, the CMAR process shaves six months off of the project. Again, in addition to a faster delivery, you have more predictability as the construction company is brought on board than the designer of the project versus arriving to the field cold with plans that they never had any input on. And number three, the CMAR process allows for us to figure ourselves from the lowest bidder. This may seem counterintuitive, but you know, when you have the lowest bidder construction company, you may run the risk, and I'm not saying this is for the middle school expansion project, but this is for any development project, that when you have a construction company serving as the lowest bidder, they may underbid the project and make up their losses through the means of change orders to make sure that the project is profitable for the company. There is one major concern with the CMAR process that's disadvantaged, that's money. Since we won't be obtaining the lowest bidder, we run the risk of never knowing if we got the most cost-effective project possible. To quantify this, CMARs are estimated to add about 5% to the construction cost of a company. This may be off-putting initially, but the costs between design-bid-build and CMAR are nearly equalized when you take into consideration the elimination of change orders and surprise costs. Since you have that guaranteed maximized price, there's not going to be some more cost on the back end, and, you know, it actually increases the cost. So what looks like a project may be initially cheaper through the lowest bidder process, since there's those costs on the back end, it actually equalizes to what you'd be paying upfront with the CMAR process. So with that understanding of the CMAR process and doing our due diligence and research on the project, and having a good understanding of the design-bid-bill process that we experienced with the middle school expansion project, the staff would highly recommend that the board authorize us via consensus to pursue a CMAR relationship with the architect and go ahead and retain them via the CMAR process and move forward with seeking a construction manager.
Do you guys have any questions? I have several, but I'll let you guys go first.
Yes, I do have one. Can you go back to the slide right before this, please, Dr. Young?
Yes, ma'am.
So under CMAR, contractor may provide less building than a bid approach to protect margin of profit.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, when, is that upfront?
That is upfront, and that's something that...
Deliverable, and we have a big surprise at the end that we didn't really get what we thought we were going to get.
Yeah, there is no midway through the process when they say, hey, well, you know what? We understood it was 50,000 square feet, but we wanted to make it 42,000 square feet. That's not the surprise. It'd actually be some, a discussion that's held upfront, and we'd explain to the construction company, look, the square footage is non-negotiable. We definitely understand the guidance of both the board and the needs of our community, and that's something that we'd make sure wouldn't be negotiated.
Thank you.
Even if that's reflected in, honestly, the guaranteed maximized price.
And if I might, the contract manager is incentivized to save money on the project, right? Because they, if there are change orders, they have to eat them essentially, in theory, and you will still see change orders in the project, but it's the contract manager who's responsible for them. Now, if there is money saved at the end of the day, that's the real incentive for the contract manager as well. Any savings that are observed in the project would be split, would be shared at the end of the project between the public body and the contract manager. So they're incentivized to save money and to work hard to do that. So that's one of the added benefits as well.
So did you, did you have examples? You said something about that the overall build-out, you probably could save up to six months. So obviously, labor cost over a six-month period is substantial savings, but did you have specific examples of this model being used where that was the case, like case studies?
There's not a lot of localities that's done in Virginia, but one that specifically that we referenced is the schools that they've built in Chesterfield, and that's was basically the proofing example for Virginia. They've actually was able to build the schools, get the projects done. They've actually was able to build the schools, get the project done, completed, and it was a faster process. There was a bad example that where it was actually more political posturing taking place in Richmond where they built two schools and there were some political opportunities for some of the opponents of the mayor to say, hey, well, this project was so expensive that you could have actually built three schools if you went with the lowest bidder. But after reviewing the analysis of the case study, it was found that there's no way that there could have been $20 million more added to the project just because it was a C-MAR process versus a design bid-build. And that's where the estimate came in that an additional cost of the C-MAR process would probably be 5% more versus, you know, the lowest bidder.
And with this process, you're saying it wouldn't be in an elimination of change orders, but the additional cost of those change orders would be eaten up by the case manager or whatever?
That's true, that's true. But there's one thing that needs to be stated. Again, when we had the discussions about change orders and we did that detailed presentation, there's two type of change orders. There's change orders that made by the construction manager, there's change orders that's made by the owner. Now, if it's owner-initiated change order, then that cost is on us.
Right.
You know, but if it's a construction, if it's a change order identified by the construction company or the architectural design, then that change order is on them.
Gotcha.
I have several questions. Are these the only two construction methods or is there other ones out there?
There's one more called design-build, but it's not, it's an older model. It actually was superseded by design-bid-build. So design-bid-build is the conventional, most popular way of pursuing construction projects. That's because they wanted to encourage the lowest bidder process for local government and C-MAR is now becoming a new fashionable way to approach construction for a large capital projects.
The Construction Manager at Risk model is fairly recent in Virginia. It was approved by the General Assembly in 2017. So there haven't been, that hasn't been that many, much time where you could see many, many projects. But there are a few that have been accomplished throughout Virginia and we would look to those, you know, as models. There is the design-build option as well. As part of this process, if the board decides to move forward with looking harder at this, and I would encourage you to do so. It's not a silver bullet by any means, but it's an option that can be more beneficial. You would need to adopt procedures for the consideration of these kinds of projects and we would prepare those for you. Once you adopt those, then you can consider proposals along the lines of Construction Manager at Risk for projects like the courthouse. And then you'd be in a position to do, to move forward with that if you wanted to.
In addition to my research, because of course I was weighing out the pros and the cons, through my research, I found that there has also been criticism by some that, hey, well, the C-MAR process really takes the competitive nature out of the bidding process simply because the community directly hires a construction company and therefore other construction companies aren't afforded an opportunity to be in the competitive bidding process. However, the competition is found at the subcontractor level. The construction manager is retained by the county and then the construction manager is responsible for negotiating and bidding with subcontractors to bring the services to the field, which accounts for 60 to 70% of the project. So the competitive nature is there. And another good thing about the C-MAR process is that if you bring the construction manager in early during the process and he's actually able to get the subcontractors negotiating early, locking them into prices, we can get them into prices for 2020 prices versus, you know, what those escalated costs may be in 2021. So you get to lock those subcontractor prices in earlier.
Another question I have is, you know, I'm very big on making sure the end users are part of the game to make sure you construct the building right. And so does the construction manager model work with the end users more than the traditional way?
Either way, as you can see, this is where the end user is, the owner. Owner is defined as basically Vic Mason, myself, the engineers, and the inspector. So regardless if they're participating in the design-bid-build or if they're participating in the C-MAR process, we own the project and we're the owners of-
Oh, I know.
-the facility. So yeah, there's continuous engagement regardless if it's taking place in, regardless if the process is DBB or if it's C-MAR.
Well, you know what I mean, end users more than just Vic Mason is a little lower there too, to get everybody involved so that we build the right building for our staff and for the county needs.
Yes, ma'am. And when I say end user, when I say Vic Mason, of course, I mean, you know, the whole courthouse staff.
And then my other question is, the bids that we have already had, what is that? How does that affect with this model? Because they bid for a different.
What happens is, and the reason why this is consensus is because we have received the bids back from the architectural firms. And if we're going to pursue a C-MAR process, then they'd have to go back and rebid because their services have basically changed slightly participating in a C-MAR process versus a design-bid-build. However, we already received those proposals back from the architecture firm in just in case that the board wanted to move forward with that. And the cost was for the leading bidder right now is like $22,000, $2,000 more. So, you know, there's really nominal cost for the architecture firm. And then for the, if we retain the construction manager, ballpark figure estimates I'm getting back that a construction manager could be retained, brought on board onto the team for $24,000, $25,000. So the costs are quite minimal or minimal, you know, for the process. It's just that the devil's in the details for the construction cost and the guaranteed maximum price.
Now, with the construction manager, is that person going to be on site?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, regularly, very regularly?
Regularly, yes, ma'am.
Okay, what do you guys think?
It comes down to, is the board valuing predictability or money? That's what it all comes down to because this does come at a cost. It's a little bit more expensive, but then we have the predictability of no surprises with change orders and surprise costs, you know, throughout the process of building the courthouse.
So you looked at both these options. Who else looked at these with you to come up with a, you said you had a staff consensus, correct?
Yes, I, it was myself, Travis Cusenberry, which is our engineer, and we had Vic Mason, who also sat in the discussions. We had conversations with Ethan Willeghore and we had conversations with a couple of architectural firms in the Commonwealth.
So you and those involved have looked at this pretty thoroughly. And the conclusion y'all came up with is this C-MAR, correct? Is that the conclusion?
We highly recommend this process over the design-bid-build.
And that's for this project only?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You're not, just if you direct staff to look into it further and prepare the documents, you're not bound to follow this process, but it gives you the option. And once you adopt the procedures, which is a prerequisite before you can even consider C-MAR projects, you still have the option to move forward with it or not. You know, you're not beholden to anything, any path forward until you actually sign on the dotted line and take public action on it. So this is just an initial briefing and initial step.
That's why I asked about the courthouse because I think we'd have to have a little more detailed approach for any buildings we renovate, if we renovate them.
Oh, absolutely. And this would, you would, if you want to go forward with this kind of thing, you would do it on a project-by-project basis just because-
That's all, I just want to make sure.
-C-MAR on this project doesn't mean you have to go through C-MAR on every project.
Right.
What do you guys think? Do we have to make a motion on it? Or consensus?
Consensus is adequate for the staff to prepare their necessary documents.
I'm good to go along with staff's recommendation on it.
I think you have a consensus on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, county administrators report.
Yes, ma'am, actually I have some outstanding news. Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Kupka referred to us completing the jail budget. It was actually my first time serving as the chairman of the Jail Finances Committee and actually being hands-on, actively involved with the creation of the budget. While working on that budget for the jail, I came across their C-FAR or their audit. And in the audit, I came across page eight, which was the discussion regarding community service inmate road crew services. As you all know, the jail actually provides prisoners to our surrounding localities to clean up litter along the roads and along the right-ofways medians and everything in the community. King George County has been a member of the Rappahannock Regional Jail since 2000, but we've never been able to get access to the program. But after a little bit more studying, looking into the audit, I found that 54 hours, 54 hours of the work that's being, of the prisoner work time that's being provided is actually on the VDOT. So I called the interim superintendent for the jail and asked him why in the world is VDOT getting 54 hours? I've been told for two years that you all don't have the capacity to take on another community, but you provided 54 hours to someone who's not even a member of the Rappahannock Regional Jail. And I said, certainly, we can get a little access, you know. Maybe VDOT could shave off a couple hours or maybe you could shave off a couple hours here or there. But I think that if King George County is going to be a member of the Rappahannock Regional Jail, then we should be afforded all the services that the jail affords versus a non-member. He tended to agree and he was able to find or make us a proposal for 192 hours of roadwork service by the prisoners. This would come out at a rate of $6,336. For that $6,336 in one year, we actually get 192 hours of teams of four to six inmates. Now we can utilize that labor to clean up along Birchwood, clean up along Bloomsbury, clean up along Comore. As the board is aware, we've received a lot of concern from the community that those roads are littered specifically by outside traffic that's coming into our landfill. And basically, we just don't have the manpower and the staff to address that. With this $6,336, that allows to get basically an extension of the staff up to six people where they will be dedicated to cleaning up those major thoroughfares and making our community more presentable to the region and to people that are visiting King George County. So what I would like to ask is if the board would consider authorizing, or I'm sorry, appropriating $6,336 from the contingency fund to the general fund and appropriating those funds to be dedicated to the Rappahannock Regional Jail road service program and then authorizing the county administrator and the county attorney to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Rappahannock Regional Jail contingent upon the county attorney's approval.
How much does VDOT pay to utilize the inmates?
I don't know. I don't know. I did ask why has VDOT been afforded, you know, this access? And I was told that a long time ago, King George County was afforded an opportunity and the county declined. So that capacity was given to other entities. Either Stafford has a large share of the hours, VDOT has offered a large, I mean, offered a share of the hours and it was via an agreement that was established decades ago.
I only ask because if VDOT's not a participant in Rappahannock Regional and they're not paying a portion, King George County is a participant and we pay a portion. We just saw that in our budget work session last week. So if we're already paying in the Rappahannock Regional, if VDOT's not paying in the Rappahannock Regional and they weren't paying for inmates or if they were paying the same rate, I would be curious how that math comes. Overall, for the hours being provided, to be able to provide those services to King George, I see that as a benefit. I'm just curious about VDOT's utilization of something that they're not paying for and we already are.
VDOT does pay for the services. They pay for the program. It's established via a contract because I was told by the interim superintendent, well, you know, this program costs money. And I'm like, okay, well, how much does it cost? I'm aware that VDOT's paying, but, you know, King George County, we have a little money that we can spend as well. And I think that this is a great return on investment, especially for $6,000. So it's not free. VDOT's not giving services for free, they're paying for it. But it was made, it was made to be understood by the jail that, hey, King George County has money. We can pay for the services. Provide us a proposal and they provided us the proposal.
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Young.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and A8 for purposes of discussion and consideration of prospective candidates for employment or appointment and discussion and consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator and county attorney because they are deemed necessary and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA Section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are in closed session.
Go ahead, Ms. Cupka.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Or, sorry, told you I'm tired. Mr. Bush, do you certify?
ISO certified.
Ms. Cupka?
ISO certified.
Mr. Granger?
ISO certified.
An ISO certified meeting is back in session. Do I have a motion?
I move to adjourn until March 17th at 6:30 in the boardroom.